All right. And so that wraps up item number five. And next up, we'll be having our quarterly council and Board of Commissioners discussion. And I know it's, we're getting late here. And hopefully, we can, we can keep this discussion relatively brief. And there's some important things that we need to discuss, certainly. So looking forward, this is all very important stuff. But we'll invite now our Board of Commissioners. We have Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Givens, and Commissioner Jones. Are all three, not sure if all three are joining or not?
No, they're trying.
Trying to. And Commissioners Administrator Angie Purdy is joining us as well.
Yeah, good evening.
Okay, yes, it looks like all, all three are joining us. And so we'll be having a discussion about ARPA priorities as well as, and I know Ms. Rice has some information that she'll be kind of kicking that discussion off with here shortly. We'll get a document here that we're going to share so that the public and anybody viewing can see that information. Really, my goal is just to kind of understand, we've, we've got this plan that we need to work on with the Commissioners. That involves our priorities and kind of the processes for how we're going to be appropriating the huge amount of resources that have been allotted to Monroe County. So we'll have a little discussion about that. But really, I just want to understand and see if there's any, any areas with these priorities that we don't agree on or that we need to do a little bit more work on. We received some information from Mr. Cockrell earlier in the week. I think all of that has been included in a document that Ms. Rice had put together that we had shared with the Commissioners regarding our priorities as the council. So we're just wanting to have a conversation about that and, you know, kind of see how we want to approach the next steps going forward. Ms. Rice, did you want to chime in at this point?
Absolutely, thank you. So TSD does have a document that they can put up at any point in the, during my conversation. I'm just going to briefly introduce it. We've asked the council and the Commissioners. And I think Jeff Cockrell, who's colleague of mine in county legal, had worked with the Commissioners to gather their, their thoughts about ARPA priorities, or we, we sometimes call it ARP or ARPA, American Rescue Plan priorities. And I gathered some council feedback and put together in a document that TSD has and will soon put up on the screen. It was remarkable how consistent the Commissioners and the council were in their shared priorities with revenue replacement being at the top. This document has, is really a compilation of the council's input that they gave to me. And as I said before, it's remarkably consistent with what the Commissioners shared with Jeff in terms of their priorities. So with that, I think I can turn it over to whichever council member wants to lead. With one last thing, I want to point out that, you know, the sort of framework, this, these first few paragraphs of this document sort of describe an overall framework that I think the council wants to take in terms of a lens which, with, with which it will look through in order to, to, to help develop the plan. The Commissioners will take the lead in development of an ARP plan, but the council has a very serious and important role to play in terms of making sure that the requests that come forward are consistent with the plan. Now making that finding when they make appropriations. So with that in mind, I don't know who wants to lead, but this document, if TSD could just scroll down, we've got, just to show what we've got in this document. We have the opening paragraphs and then we have 10, I think.
Can we just kind of briefly run through those, Ms. Rice?
Yes, I sure can. I can run through them. So if we go back at the top, we do talk about the lens that we want to look through is one that focuses on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and creating resilience in both humans and our environment. And those, that's very consistent with what the White House put out in their statement. They said that President Biden was investing in America, created millions of additional good paying jobs, combating the climate crisis, advancing racial equity, and building back better than before. I really think that's something that council wants to focus on, which is building better than before. And again, let me emphasize that that's consistent with what the Commissioners have shared, I think, in their, in their thoughts as well. But in order to benefit all residents of Monroe County, those within the city, outside the city, it's recommended that the, we immediately implement and actively participate in a coordinating council with other governmental entities, nonprofits, and stakeholders. I know the BEDC is involved in this, and so they may be one of nonprofits are participating in leading this charge. So if we scroll down just a little bit, the 10 priorities include, the first one, revenue replacement. I think everybody has consistently said that replacing lost revenue is important because then we can use that revenue for other things that it was originally intended for. Second, responding to the negative impacts caused by COVID-19. And that can be addressing homelessness and housing issues. There was a Heading Home Plan that's been developed. Many people in Monroe County government participated in that. Other governmental entities and nonprofits participated. We can address community gaps that were, were identified in our criminal justice study. One of the things I, I thought when Liz Grenot was giving her presentation, there are remarkable overlaps between our criminal justice study, what the Community Voices project has, has, and what the Heading Home Plan has, has found. And so I think, and also what the ARP dollars are intended to be used for. So those similarities, I think, can be highlighted as we develop our plan and then focus on those things. Also, supporting countywide public transportation, including funding initiatives for rural transit and collaborating with Bloomington Transportation to extend transit. I do, as a lawyer, I like to point out that the boundaries for Bloomington Transit could be extended right now. There's the authority rests with the city council. So that I think, sort of looking at Bloomington Transit, which is a separate legal authority from the city of Bloomington, and working with the city council and the county to sort of figure out how to create a really robust transportation system in Monroe County. Third, the third goal was to incentivize employees who, who choose to get a vaccine, to encourage them to get a vaccine, and also to include incentives for county residents to get vaccines. That is something that Penny Cottle has talked about greatly, and we'd like to figure out a way to use ARP dollars to do that. Fourth, broadband. This is an initiative that I know that Jeff McKim has, has been providing for some time. And I think this would also help out with what Community Voices is doing because people need to have good broadband if they're going to have telemedicine appointments. So, you know, just increases accessibility for people. And so, so working on really creating a good broadband system. The Commissioners have also been for years thinking about how to get this done. And the state, I was thinking about it as well. Five, we will support tourism, our convention center and tourism broadly in the county. Six, looking at our Monroe County public health capability. I think that that is something we could also work with, with the hospital and with Indiana University School of Public Health. Seven, stormwater infrastructure. Eight, other public work infrastructure. Nine, social infrastructure that's needed to improve the local economy by working with, you know, different agencies, nonprofits, and working, thinking about quality childcare. And lastly, thinking about our first responders. And that includes law enforcement, health providers, teachers, and how to help those people who have put themselves out on the front line to really keep us all safe. So that, those are the additions that I, I will be happy to answer any questions. But obviously, the council Commissioners may want to share their individual thoughts.
Yes, thank you very much. And I want to thank Ms. Rice and Michelle and our staff and everybody for their work and compiling all these different suggestions and priorities. And thanks to all of my colleagues on council, as well as the Commissioners, for their very thoughtful suggestions as well, too. So I think this is, you know, things are looking great here, but very interested to hear how others are feeling about it and what, what thoughts are among our colleagues on the Board of Commissioners as well as council members. So I'll open it up to anybody who would like to, who has questions or would like to share any thoughts that they have. Ms. McKim?
Yeah, I guess I did remember reading, I did read the Commissioners' sort of draft for the plan also. And I just, is there anything that it was in the Commissioners' plan that was not included in our recommendations? Or do we simply expand? I think we basically expanded from what their priorities were. Is that right?
I believe so, yes. Mr. Cockrell, I don't know if, if he's on the...
Yeah, I, I looked at that today as well, and I do think that the overlap was consistent. But there was just a little bit of an expansion on the council's part.
And then just to clarify, the plan can be changed and evolved and made more detail over time. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely correct. It is supposed to be, you know, you have until 2024 to commit the spending. You have a little bit longer than that to spend it, but you have to commit it to, by the end of 2024. It is intended to be a very thoughtful, long-term plan and not really intended to address emergencies, but to plant seeds that are going to sprout long-term. And so you do get the opportunity to adjust over that period of time if you need.
Any other, yes, Ms. Woltz?
Yeah, you know, I think that given this list, which I really appreciate Ms. Rice compiling for us, because it's good to kind of see what everyone's ideas are. And it's really, it's kind of invigorating really to see all the, the good things on the list. But I do want to, to kind of just emphasize, I think, that, given that this idea of being intentional and, and it's, and making sure that this isn't just a Band-Aid approach or something along the lines of, of the CARES Act money, where we were really just trying to get help out as, as quickly as possible. I feel that the, the preface there about diversity, equity, and inclusion and, and environmental and, and social resilience kind of, well, I just don't want that to get lost. And since it's not called out in the list, and I see it as going across all of the things in the list, I'm hoping that as, as we develop sort of a process for reviewing proposals or considering how this goes, that we have some sort of, you know, maybe even informal rubric of some, of sorts that keeps us focused on these things. And maybe have a discussion about, you know, what are those, those key factors that we want to make sure, you know, check the boxes on these things as we move forward? Because I, I just, you know, and the same with, and this is, I'm sorry for not being super coherent right now, a long day. But the same thing for the one that was about the process, I think, about forming, you know, making sure we coordinate with others, like other entities of government. And maybe that's not on there, I don't remember, but I know we've talked about it. So, so those sorts of things, maybe forming some guidance on how we review proposals. That's what I'm talking, I'll stop.
Maybe TSD can put that document right back up and we can have those paragraphs just for a minute up there. So if anybody wants to read them, those paragraphs, and thank you. It's really the, the second paragraph. And, and I think Kate was referencing also this, this participation, the creation and participation of a coordinating council. And I know that the language here about diversity, equity, and inclusion was spurred by a conversation I had with a council member in particular, Peter, if you, I don't know if you want to speak to that as well. I know that that was something that, that you were interested in.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that the public sees when they first click on the county council website is a statement that we put up last summer, which really solidifies, I think, for me, our commitment to recognizing the value of all people. And I think as, I, I really think we need to credit Michelle Whitney with the work that she's doing across all the departments with her organization and really the work that she's been doing with council. And I, you know, this, this really does matter, especially in this place. And, and I think that this is a, just an ideal opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really be able to put our values on the paper and make sure that our values are here. And, and I think, I really like the second sentence in there that, that ties it to the, the forming language of these, these dollars and these funds. They are meant to be systemic changes. They are meant to be a way for us to say, we want our society to be better. We want to build back better. And I think that's exactly why I wanted that language, or I asked for that language to be in there.
And one of the other things that I want to point out in that regard is that I had a good conversation with our health administrator, Penny Cottle. And, you know, much of what she's working on, and, you know, this plan talks about sort of building our public health capacity. One of the things that she specifically requested, and I think we should think about, is strategic planning. And how can the health department get away for a little bit of time? Because, you know, every day, this not an exaggeration, every day they're getting calls. I know today was a particularly hard day. Some people get so frustrated, they, they hang up on our health department workers. It's just, it's a lot of work for them, and it's pretty tense. So hard to do strategic planning in that environment. But be able to give them an opportunity to get away, to really think about what's to dream, what's our public health capacity? How can they recommend to you how ARP dollars could be spent? And that may be even something the council and the Commissioners wanted to participate in. Think about what that looks like. Think about that strategic planning. And also think about training and investment in employees. So Penny mentioned, there are often national conferences that are really, have great ideas, and they can connect work with other public health people across, across the country. They don't often get an opportunity to go to those. So think about also, not just for our health department, what, what other employees or departments could we invest in? So I wanted to share those ideas with you and maybe get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, well, I saw Mr. Cockrell's hand first, and then go Ms. Hawke. I think Jeff had probably had, had been waiting in line there for a bit.
Well, it's, it's your meeting, so if you want the, the council, that's fine. You know, there are a couple of statements that made earlier. One is, I do believe, you know, the Commissioners' response or the Commissioners' list to you included seven things, and I think they're all pretty much incorporated in there. They may be divvied out a little bit, and you might be able to parse it here or there. But I think they're all there. The one thing that was in the Commissioners that was, that's not in yours is that there was a statement in it that said the revenue replacement was the number one priority. And after that, everything hadn't been prioritized. And so I think that's an important statement to get out with this list, is that they're not, other than potentially number one, they're really not in any particular order of priority. And I think that's important for the public to know.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Decker?
Thank you very much. What I wanted to do is react to what Ms. Rice said. And I think that we will never, after all this, and I know everyone is questioning when after all is going to really take hold and after starts. And that's another consideration. But I think after all this, or at some point during this, people, people are going to generally come to a consensus that they'll look at health and public service. They're going to look at those things, I think, a lot differently. And what I really appreciate about both the language and, and from council and Commissioners is that there is some flexibility as we continue to figure out what this is going to be like. We are, I hate to always say these things, but we are closer to March of 2022 than we are to March of 2020, when this really took off in this community. And that's a long two years, but we're not far from those two years. And so I appreciate the flexibility as we are able to, to figure out what, all the things that we'll have to figure out for all the people that are affected in every stage of all of this. And it's certainly not completely over yet, in, in any stretch. I mean, Ms. Cottle did a really good job today telling us precisely the things that we have to be thinking about, because our, our folks are thinking about them. So, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you. Ms. Hawke, did you have a question or comment?
Yes. First of all, there was something left off of the list that I had sent in requests for, and that was to honor our senior citizens. I remembering that they could use some assistance when it comes to housing. What we see that's happening now is this annexation should go through as being proposed. We're going to see a lot of our senior citizens who live in those houses that they've lived in for maybe four years. And their taxes are going to go up to the point that it'll be two or three months worth of groceries for them, because they're living on very limited income. And I think there's ways that we, if we put our mind to it, they will be able to help those folks. And I am concerned about housing for our senior citizens as well. So I think we need to take that in consideration and put our heads together and see how we can help them. That, that's one thing, wasn't put on the list. The other thing is, I think we need to, when we talk about how long this has gone on, we may think it's gone on a long time, but you talk to your friends who are nurses. They're tired. They're tired. Talk about our first responders. Those people are out there in the ambulances. And they're, we've lost two of those in the last, what, a week? They're out there working this through this whole pandemic and through, and through all of this. It's so stressful for them. So we're talking about law enforcement, who is, they're, they're doing a huge job. And it just seems to me, we need to take a look at those folks, and we need to honor them in a way of, of maybe bonuses or, and, and we've seen this suggested in some of these other areas, where you could do it with a bonus, we could do it with making sure their salaries are appropriate. And you know, we, we have to do something about this. We really do. That we need, we need law enforcement. We need those nurses at the hospital, and they're tired. We need the ambulances to come pick us up and take us to the hospital. Folks, we, we've got, we need a fire department to show up. We've got to think about those things. That serves every person in Monroe County.
And if I omitted anything from this list, I apologize for that. I will make sure that I look back at that email and incorporate that. I did, I was thinking that housing was in this document already, but I will definitely take a look at that and make sure I incorporate those comments.
Now that you mention housing, the other thing that I've had questions on today, you know, I just was trying to get answers about what other cities or counties are using this Housing First program. And then it was like, well, I'm not sure we're really talking about Housing First, but one of the emails I received today, it appeared that we are talking Housing First. So I went to the state site and I read the manual. I invite you all, if we plan to use the Housing First portion of this for funding, even if we're not working directly with them, if that funding is coming through to provide some of this housing we're talking about, we need to look at that manual, because it will allow us to understand better what, what we're talking about, what we're working with. So I invite you all to look at the manual. I'm used to that. I've sold housing through Farmers Home, through Rural Housing, through VA, through FHA. You read the rules, you figure out what, how it works and how the funding relates to what we are planning to do. It's important.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that we also have opportunities for our Commissioners. I had asked earlier if any, if council members and Commissioners to provide some input, if they have any on the proposed priorities. And want to make sure that we also have some opportunities for our Commissioners to provide some feedback as well, too.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Commissioner Thomas is still, she's having big connection issues. I think she is no longer with us. No, she isn't. So basically, we agree that, that your list certainly incorporated everything in ours. We think that ours was a little bit more general in the way it was worded. So some of the things that were separated out by the council kind of fell underneath other broader categories that we had. But there, there is a lot here that's very worthwhile. I do like the first paragraphs that indicate your approach to it. I think in general, our feeling is that, at this point, keeping the plan as general as possible will give us the most flexibility, because we always have the option to amend it later. And as we are able to really focus in on things and figure out what we actually can do and what are priorities, at some point, we probably will have to look at priorities to some extent. And that would be the time, I think, to make things a little more specific than we have at this time. But in general, it sounds really good. I think we're all in agreement. We're looking for very much the same thing. Clearly, revenue replacement is the number one most important thing in all of our view. And beyond that, it's going to take a bit of work to figure out what, what to pursue when and how vigorously and, and things like that. But I think this is a great beginning. I think we're really going to be able to work together on this.
Excellent. Well, glad to hear that. And Ms. Munson, did you have some remarks?
I did. But Ms. Rice just reported that she will take into account the things that were sent in but didn't make it onto the list. And one, one that I was concerned about was supporting social infrastructure needs to improve our local economy. And what the, what the major need is that, that I see here is childcare, so that people can go back to work. And I'm not saying funding this, but to partner with and cost share with agencies and nonprofits who can help build this terrible gap. and cost share with agencies and nonprofits who can help build this terrible gap that we have right now.
I thought that made the list. That was on the list, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so. If TST can put it back, I think it was
Number nine.
Towards the bottom.
Yeah.
If they'll put it back up there, let's just take a look real quick. I think it is.
Oh, it did make, it did make.
Support social infrastructure needs to improve. Look, yeah, there it is.
Thank you for doing that.
That's okay.
Very good. Yes, Ms. Wills?
Just one more comment, I promise. I want to also just suggest or call attention to the opportunity we have, and it's mentioned here in a couple of places with reference to some of the reports we've received, Criminal Justice Report and, and others. But, I mean, even just tonight, we've, we've heard from the community voices. We've, we've got a lot of really timely information around public health, housing, even transportation and, and some of these issues. And I'd like to make sure that when we are proposing or crafting more specific ideas that they're, that we're drawing on these sources directly and, and really grounding what, what we prioritize in, in these data that, I mean, are right there at our fingertips. And sometimes so much so that it's overwhelming, we can't even sort through. So I just feel like it's important to, you know, kind of articulate that we need, we need to have cited and, and sound grounding for some of our projects, for all of our projects. That's it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on the, on the priorities? I know we still got a lot of work ahead, but it's, I think this is a great foundation for all of that that, that, that we're going to be working through here in the near future. So it's good to see a lot of alignment early on in the process, and I appreciate all of the insight from our commissioners as well, too. Mr. Iverson and then Mr. McKim is the order I saw.
I, I was wondering what the next step would be, or what are the next steps?
Yes, that's a, that's a good question. I suppose we'll need to get the plan established officially. We do have a deadline here at the end. Is it the end of this month or next month, Ms. Rice? Do we have that report submitted?
Yeah, this month is the first reporting. I think the auditor's office is on top of that. I do think that Jeff Cockrell and I can work together to make sure that we take the commissioner's list, this list, anything that we may have omitted, get it in a draft plan, and then, you know, the commissioners, again, as I mentioned before, will take the lead in adopting a plan. And, you know, so we can talk with them about how, you know, how and when they want to do that. And then, you know, again, if, you know, we, if you want us to reach out to you know, BEDC or to the city and try to work on that coordinating council, that's something we also can do. Just hearing Kate's comments, we got to remember that we're getting our money, they're getting their money. There are other, you know, funding sources that are available to other nonprofits. So we want to make sure that we're not, we're not duplicating, that we're all being, you know, getting the most for bang for our buck with these hard dollars.
Yep, yep. BEDC has done just a fantastic job of, you know, proposing a good framework that we can work in in that regard. So really looking forward to those future discussions as well, too.
Yeah, so first of all, yeah, I, I very much agree with the support moving forward with the kind of BEDC framework for community coordination here. I think that that would probably be more effective than trying to work directly with the city. I think it would be more inclusive, and I think it would just be useful overall to have kind of a third party provide some facilitation of those kinds of discussions. So, yeah, I really hope we can move, move forward with that. I guess the other thing I said, and I appreciate what Commissioner Jones, the comments she made about the, that the commissioners' priorities were broader in this, and that we may have broken them out in, in some more detail. And I think that's, that is very important for us to keep in mind, and that, you know, the first iterations of the plan can, you know, should probably very well be very broad. And, you know, and in particular articulate that priority replacing revenue that we've lost is, is the most important priority at the moment. But what I, so what I think this, this whole process has been just extremely useful for us as a council to get our own views out on, on how the money should be used. And, you know, it's, it's just interesting comparing the city's process for doing this and kind of rolling this out with the counties. And, you know, the cities, well, okay, with the county, the public gets to see the sausage being made. You know, the city has kind of a luxury of the mayor being able to roll out a, a program that's nearly complete, you know, with dollar amounts and everything. And that's where the county just doesn't have that luxury. We have to do this all in public, you know, we have to, this, to talk with the commissioners and come to, you know, we essentially have to have 10 elected officials that to some degree have to come to some kind of an agreement as to how to move forward with this. And I, I really like that. I like that it may be a little bit more messy, but it, I think it really is, you know, in a way, it really gives the, the public a view into and, and access to an influence in the, the process the entire way along. But, but yeah, I think it's just been, this, this process has been very useful for us, just even as council members, just in getting our own priorities out onto the, out onto the floor and, and being able to share them with each other as well as the commissioners. So, but, but I, you know, I'm certainly cognizant of, of the, the commissioner's desire to pass something first that's more broad. And I, you know, I totally support that perspective for that, that path.
Yes, thank you. Any other, so Mr. Iverson, just going back to your question, did you feel like you got your question answered on next steps?
I, I think we're in agreement and we're in good hands, so I feel good about it.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Cockrell, yes?
Yeah, and I think this goes to Peter's question as well. And hopefully the public will hear this. I know on the county's website, there's a way for the public to kind of make comment on, on what we're doing as well. Kind of one of the, I, I heard what Peter says, but I think that the, that has not been on our website very long. And I think the commissioners really want to get some feedback on that before they finalize a plan. So just keep that in the back of your minds when we're talking about timeframes and, and those kind of items.
All right, so I think we'll conclude that portion of the discussion and will now move on to item B, which is kind of a brief discussion now of the geo bond timeline and proposed project list. And hello, Ms. Purdy.
Hi there. You said timeline. I'm hoping that Mr. Cockrell is still on here because I've not been paying attention to the timeline. But I do, my understanding is that we are hoping to get approval from the council this evening. This is the proposed project list for the 2021 general obligation bond. And nothing has changed since the last time, I believe, that you guys have seen it. So if you don't mind, I can do a real quick run through. I've got a little PowerPoint for you just to kind of highlight the, the projects, if you will. So if that's good, I can.
Yes.
Okay, great. I believe that TST has already given me the ability to share my screen. And need to, okay, so I'm gonna try something. You know, I'm just not. There we go. All right, can you see it? Can you see the?
Yep.
Wonderful. Okay, so that brings us here. We have talked with you guys and brought come up with a proposal in which it meets the $3 million threshold. We've got the health building, we call it Phase Two. As you know, we've renovated the our health facility for our Penny Cottle and her staff. Virtual cluster upgrade, which is a TFC issue. Parks, parks equipment, we can talk about that a little bit. Non-law enforcement officer vehicles, solar infrastructure, a sidewalk connector, stormwater, back truck, highway equipment, and trail connection that would be part of a highway project, and park renovation specific to Flatwoods. And so here's just a kind of a quick one on the health building, and I tried to grab some pictures here. What we'll be looking at is the, the loading dock, which I, I hope you can see is, is in somewhat a bit of disarray, disheveled. I think definitely need a new roof. There's some question about maybe we could actually repurpose that space and add additional either storage space or some kind of off space or something for the people who are residing in our health building. The other one is to work on the, the hallway as you're entering in, you know, you are part of the, the health department. And then, and then a picture of the outside of the the main entrance. We're looking at all the entrances actually on, on the, the health building. So that would be repairing and renovating those particular items for the health building. And the virtual cluster, I asked Mr. Evans for this information because this is not my area of expertise, and he gave me a long version and a short version. So I've given you the short version. And basically it provides an upgrade of our two virtual clusters. We have two ones at the Justice Building, and one is also at our Emergency Operations Center, which is our continuity of operations, governmental operation site should there be a problem. The Justice Building represents 90% of our mission critical servers. And the EOC actually maintains a mirrored copy of the critical servers, and they can be activated if something happened to our main server. So it's a nice, quick backup that we always have access to. And Mr. Evans said that our servers currently are about eight years of age, and I think he said that's three years longer than they probably should be. Parks equipment, and I think that you guys have been aware that the parks is in need of some, a more or two. And so what we did is we put this in to the, the bond. I do, I did make a note here for you. This is the one area that's supposed to be a little bit iffy. So it's 41,200 for two lawn mowers, a field striper, and a sand and salt spreader. The Parks Board actually elected to go ahead and purchase one of the mowers this year, and that was for a mower for 13,300. So that gives you a new balance of 27,900. Council could elect to not, not include the parks equipment in this particular bond and instead move that 27,900, or basically tell the commissioners to go ahead and add that to their County General Building Fund. We have an equipment line in there. I think it's been submitted at $4,000. But that 27,900 could in fact go into the county buildings fund if you don't want to take it out of this bond. If you don't want to take it out of this bond, then that 41,200 could help with the cost for the back trucks that we're coming up to here a little bit. These are fleet non-law enforcement vehicles. We're obviously going to be looking for electric vehicles as we can. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to talk with Greg. Finding vehicles right now is like finding, yeah, needles in a haystack. So any vehicle is just kind of a, it's kind of a difficult thing at this point in time. We're definitely looking at for electric if we can, which ties into the solar infrastructure that I haven't brought up yet, but we need to replace at least eight of our vehicles next year, and those vehicles range in model years from 1996 to 2016. I thought this was of interest. The 1996 model belongs to our Parks and Rec Department. The 2016 is actually an animal management vehicle and has in excess of 100,000 miles on it. And, oh, the cost of vehicles are exponentially going up. That's the other problem. Here's the solar infrastructure, and the possible projects that are, that we're looking at is adding additional solar electric plug-in sites at the highway garage, showers, and adding additional to our county garage. Possibility of putting solar panels on additional county structures and adding covered parking at showers that would go in with the plug-ins, like sites. I've got Solar Farm here with a question mark. I know that that's been brought up. I could not remember the site that had been questioned. So just wanted to make sure it was on here for you guys to, to be aware of. And then, also something else that we were looking at was solar charging stations at county parks and maybe along the trail. These are, these seem to be kind of cool things for the public to, to be able to use if they're out with their kids and their phones are about to die. And then highway. The highway is a, it's a grouping of projects. It's a total of $927,000. 270 of that is the trail connection, Liberty Drive to Cars. 407, I believe, is the mini excavator, Greater and Lowboy. And the design work for the Bachelor is 250, I think. It was on the first screen. We can go back to if you like, but those are all the highway projects, and the excavator, Greater, and the boy will obviously help our highway guys do their, do their jobs better and have safer equipment. Stormwater is in need of a back truck, and this, this purchase, in order to get the the bond down to the 3 million, and there have been discussions that part of it can be paid from Stormwater, so that's what this is. It's a 293,000 would be paid from Stormwater, 161 from this particular bond. And I think believe that Mr. Cockrell has said, stated earlier today in a brief conversation with some members of council that as part of the bonding resolution, that we would, would like to ask for language that would allow us to pay kind of in advance from a different funding source, the 161,800, and then be reimbursed to that source after the bond monies actually are deposited.
Yeah, and I think that's similar to what we did with the LAW software. So it's something that we've done previously.
The back truck be paid for with ARPA funds? To Stormwater?
I don't know the answer to that question. Jeff, do you know if that would be a ARPA?
I, I will, I will answer it this way. I believe it is, but I do never, and I'm never going to tell you anything firm until I have found it in the Treasury guidelines. I know Stormwater projects are because that is in the guidelines. So I would, I would say that I would suspect it is, but until I've looked it in the guidelines and have read it, I'm not going to give you an absolute answer.
And then Parks, Flatwoods, Parks had made requests, and I believe that Kelly had also shared this with you guys previously. And it's to provide the engineering for ADA redesign, typo in there, ADA redesign and replacement of the playground area equipment. And if the playground equipment comes in under cost, they're hoping to do interior trail for connection to East going to Ellisville and West going to Owen County. She indicated that would be the trailhead for Monroe County, Owen County trail. And that brings us back to the 3 million. And that is the, that's the end of the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, very good. So what do we need to do at this point? You get, you, the commissioners need basically the, the approval of, of council on this project. of council on this project list?
Yeah. Yeah, so we can go forward with reaching. I know that Mr. Cockrell's reached out to bond council. Jeff, do you want to elaborate? And then you guys could, you know, if you want to change something, if you could agree to the 3 million and the basic projects and you want to take something out, for instance, then you could tell us that you would like to put more money into solar infrastructure or the sidewalk connector. Or or maybe help Parks renovation to give them some more to, in fact, complete the trail connection.
I think we are proceeding with getting the documents and I think we already have draft draft documents based upon these projects. I know historically we've, we've kind of done that. And then sometimes, sometimes not at the meeting where it all gets approved, it all gets reworked. Prefer to avoid that because that always leads to angst on, on at least my part. And you know, and I, and I think this is the first year we've really started this list with you guys in the spring. I think we came to the March meeting or the April meeting. Have not heard any negative feedback about this list. And so, you know, I guess now would be a good time or to let us know if there is any negative feedback and and we can and we can incorporate that or basically, we're going to move forward with this list, get it to you guys in September for a first reading, final approval in your meeting in October. And that way we can, again, we can get it sold before Thanksgiving because that is an important timeline for getting, you know, getting the the correct interest rate that we want.
Well, I guess I'm good with the 3 million figure. I guess I would like to know a little bit more to see if that back truck could be paid for with ARPA funding. And I, for me personally, I guess I'd rather pay for it in cash than have to pay interest on it. And then maybe we could use that 161,000 for, you know, some, another priority somewhere else in the bond. But I'm fine with with a $3 million figure. Mr. McKim?
I am also fine with $3 million figure and I appreciate the commissioners and Mr. Cockrell kind of involving us in in this discussion early on this time. This, this is, we can be much more familiar with these projects by the time we have to make the decision. I would not be in favor of, I mean, I possibly paying the, for the back truck after, you know, out of cash is is not unreasonable. I would not want to try to use that as for ARPA. I don't think, even if you could, you know, come up with a way to justify it, I don't think that fits the you know, the spirit behind what ARPA is meant to do. So I wouldn't want to pursue that particular method of funding. But, you know, certainly paying from cash is, is a, is certainly a possibility. I think the other thing that we need to see this in context of, and I don't know if we want to go down this path, but that's is in the the airport, in the context of the airport ban. And the pot, you know, the, the, I think originally there was a discussion that, or a thought that we would probably have to do a bond to replace the ban, which you know, would would then be essentially adding on to this $3 million. We'd be saying, no, we're not really going to borrow $3 million. We'll borrow 4 million, 4.25 million dollars. And but we clearly do have the cash to at least pay for that. I, I mean, if we look at our rainy day balance, about 9.7 million dollars. We have the cash to pay for that, that airport property out of cash and not, not do a bond at all for that. And so I think we're already making a substantial investment in our capital priorities out of cash. I guess what I'm really trying to say, I think we're already, especially if we go in that direction, we're already making a substantial investment in our capital priorities out of cash. And so I I'm not sure what we decide is the, is the maximum we'd be interested in in spending out of cash. What, what would we be freeing up? If we paid for the the vac truck out of, out of cash, what, what would we want to use that additional room in the bond for? It's just
That's a good question.
I'm throwing out there.
No. Mr. Deckard?
Thank you very much. And I, I was just looking for a clarification on our process and particularly if anybody's watching this tonight. Tonight, the commissioners are essentially looking for, do you like this number, the, the $3 million number and approximately this project list, are you good with that? We're not looking for a formal vote, but just the sentiment of the council at this point, is that correct?
That's correct. The formal votes will come in September and October.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, I, I also in favor of the 3 million figure. And I also wanted to share that, you know, that this lead time, with this long conversation we've been having has been helpful because members of the Environmental Commission have come to me and asked me about the solar infrastructure investment that we're going to be making here. And so I think this has been a good, a good process that allows for transparency in the way we're doing this. So just wanted to provide that feedback as well.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Wilks and then Ms. Hawke?
Um, yeah, I swear I saw something in an email that was an ordinance for 3,100,000. And I'm wondering, did I, was that something different? Am I crazy?
And I can answer that, just like last year, we did $3 million in projects, but we also have transaction costs. And so, you know, we don't know the final figure for those transaction costs, but we we advertise, we're going to advertise a high to make sure we cover all those.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Hawke and then Ms. Munson and then Ms. Ridge, I believe Lisa Ridge had indicated she wanted to speak.
Yes, it, it won't surprise any of you to know that I do not support a $3 million bond. We have a lot of cash on hand. We could do much of this with the dollars that we've already received from the public. And so I don't want us to spend down to where we can't afford to do what we need to do, you know, make payroll, whatever. But I just think just because we're allowed to to do $3 million bond every year does not mean that we should. So that's, I just don't like borrowing anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munson?
Thank you. I do support the $3 million threshold and I'm wondering about purchase of lawn mowers with a bond. That to me is something that I think could be paid for by cash. But mostly I want to make sure that the the funding that is needed for the bachelor school sidewalk connector is, is all that is needed because that project is very important, not just for the school, but also for the library that will be going, building there soon.
That is the first phase that is in this particular bond, the design phase. And I know that Lisa Rich, I think is still on here.
Yes.
Hey you.
Yeah, you're correct. That is just for the design, that was kind of a starting point for us. And then, of course, you would have to decide your route, what, what your best options are. And then you would go into whatever right away services would be needed.
Okay.
And the only comment I was wanting to make on the ARPA request for the back truck, I know the back truck is an expensive item that we had requested for. And we do plan on going to the stormwater board. We've been in much discussion about paying for that also through stormwater funds, what's not funded through the GEO bond. However, with the ARPA funds, I know you have a project list. I know you're, it's going to take time to develop that list. There is a back truck that'll be available in November or December. That's why I plan on coming to you hopefully in October for an additional. Otherwise, with everything else that's COVID has affected, we could be a year out and our back truck at this point is completely done. So
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments or concerns, Ms. Wilks?
Well, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Munson's question about the parks equipment. And, you know, there's a, you know, it's sort of, it's been a lot of discussion. And, and trying to make sure that equipment that they need gets to them in a timely manner, I think, was the reason that the Parks Board agreed to go ahead and buy one piece, one mower right away because it's completely done and and not working and they have another one that's rusting out is my understanding. But I know Ms. Purdy said something about moving it over to the commissioners, I mean, fund, is that something the commissioners are interested in?
I may, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other for us. It would be part of the 2022 budget. We did not submit our budget to with that in there, but if you guys want it in there, we could easily put it in.
Got it. Got it.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes, as far as that mowing equipment, depending on what price ranges, if it's reasonable to move forward now, there's really no reason why we couldn't, if they can get their hands on their equipment that they want, to proceed with that and just come forward with an additional appropriation or whatever. We don't know what's going to happen by next year, but if you can get your hands on a good piece of equipment at a reasonable price, we need to just do it.
I don't think they would be upset by it with that at all.
No. And
Well, keep us posted. Yeah.
The park structure is on.
Season is not over. I know that, you know, it's been so dry, not doing a lot of mowing, but there's going to be all the leaves coming down. They'll, they'll be able to use that equipment. And the sooner we get it, I think, the better. Going to use the money, going to do it anyway.
Yeah. Um, you know, and I think that, I think it was a matter of trying to, to not, you know, I think there was a hesitance about coming for, asking for another appropriation and recognizing that two mowers unanticipated and then there's this other equipment. You know, just trying to do the right thing, but absolutely, I think they're ready to purchase. The directors on the meeting, I don't want to put you on the spot, Kelly, but I think I am.
And no, any weary that the council, the commissioners want us to put this in, we will do this. And we already have quotes for the equipment. So however you all want us to proceed, we just don't want to forget about the equipment.
Yes, Ms. McGinn?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, if, you know, the, the council is going to go along with a $3 million bond. And we understand the priorities. I think that at this point it becomes six of one, half a dozen of the other, exactly what, what fund it comes from. You know, yeah, we can, we can. If it makes sense to get Kelly to mow her more quickly, then, you know, we could pay it through some fund that we can get it to her. Like that, and then spend the money on the back truck. I mean, that, that's seems eminently doable to me. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a really a big heavy decision that we need to, we need to make. I think we, we can all be flexible about. And we all understand that you don't want to have mowers that are, that don't mow and that are rusting apart.
Does that mean?
I would say, Kelly, just work with Kate on, you know, what, what you would prefer there, keep us posted and we can, we can do it either way.
Excellent. I'm very good at filling out paperwork.
We'll leave that.
Very good. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, I'll ask Mr. Cockrell, Ms. Purdy, you feel like you've got all the information you need here from this discussion tonight to kind of move forward?
I think so.
Okay, great. And then we'll have the official votes down the road. And I'm sure there'll be more discussions taking place between now and then too. All right.
Thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you. Yeah, this has been a good, good discussion tonight with our colleagues on the board of commissioners. Thank you so much for joining us. And we'll look forward to this next quarterly meeting here in about three months. Okay, so that will wrap up item number six. We're on to number seven now. This is our health department.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of the Health Department's request to change a part time hourly position to a full time position in Fund 1159-0000.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I believe Ms. Cottle is joining.
Yes. Thank you. And I will try to be quick. We are, and just for the record, we are trying to work the process according to how it's supposed to be done. So this request is not for an immediate change. It is for the 2022 budget. As we have been and the board's been discussing the needs for 2022. We've talked about a lot of different things and different positions and those kinds of things. And really came to settle on this one request. And that is to take what is currently a part time position, the admin assistant. It's tipped right now, paid for out of local health maintenance funds. And put it in the health fund as a full time position. There are a lot of reasons for this and the biggest one is probably retention. That may not seem like an important position to somebody, but it really is kind of the backbone. And there's a lot of moving pieces and parts. As you know, we have lots of things that happen once a year, twice a year. So learning those things, you may get experience with it once. And it's another year before you'd experience it again. If we have a part time person who is coming and going every year, every year and a half, every two years, it makes it really hard to get somebody who really understands the depth of the work that we do in the department can really be that person who can help with various transitions in the department. So we feel like it will help with retention. And I can go through the history of what we've had. We've only had, we are on our second person in this position. So when this was new, we had someone who, who had been in the health department. They wanted part time work, so it was a good fit for them. They came to us with lots of experience within the department and lots, lots of knowledge. They had worked in vital records. So now we're in a position where we have someone who's doing very, very well, but they don't have that experience to back up vital records. And we need that kind of backup, that secondary when people are off, if they need to go to a conference. If things are just backed up, that somebody's out sick, those kinds of things. So this will, we believe, help us to kind of cover a lot of different areas, but provide continuity over time. It will help transition new people into their positions and help honestly with succession planning for all of the department and really keep retention. Right now, when we have get part time people, they're usually, they're temporary part time, even though you have a permanent position. They may be students or they're looking for full time work. So they're not really there very long. And so we would like to be able to provide backup as we're working on budgets and doing things. This position is also very helpful in preparing for the board and for the budget process to free up and help. Now we have a financial person, but it can free them up from having to do some of the smaller, what may seem like smaller tasks that this assistant could help with in preparing for the, for the board, pulling reports, those kinds of things on the financial side as well. I tried to summarize that. I'm not sure if I, how clear I was, so ask away.
No, it's good. So this, this will be effective, this will be in the 2022 budget, so it's not anything. No, it's good. So this, this will be effective. This will be in the 2022 budget, so it's not anything that you're wanting to do right now. My understanding is that, and this is kind of something like along the lines of what we ran into in the last meeting, I think with Ms. Ridge, that this job description would actually need to be factored by WIS before we can formally, officially approve the request. Is that right, Kim? Okay, so-
It is correct.
So what we can do here tonight, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, is just approve sending this over to WIS for their evaluation and factoring and classification of the position, of the full-time position. Then I would just, you know, if it, you know, based on what council members say, if, if they're okay with that, we could take this up in your budget request in the budget hearing. Does that work for everybody? Okay, does that work for you, Ms. Cottle?
It absolutely does.
It's always a lot of meetings, I know, and then you have to wait for three hours, three and a half hours to get to this point and we got to get it sent over to WIS.
That's okay.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes, let, let's ask Ms. Rice if this keeps us in line with doing what we just said we were going to do, which was follow the process. So is this appropriate?
Yes, and I want to make sure Penny has been to PAC before, right? Yes, yes, so yes, it is. I think it's consistent. And, and but let me say that if there's somebody here that thinks that's not consistent, let's see, let's talk about that right now.
No, that was my question. Just wanted to make sure we've, we're honoring what we just said we were going to do.
I agree and I appreciate that. I think we are, Kim. I think we are, I think we're good.
And we did anticipate that next step, but we just wanted to make sure what we needed to do to have this discussion at budget hearings.
Yeah, and this is consistent with how we handle the highway request as well, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And what I hope we need to make sure is we're keeping a list. What we're supposed to be doing is keeping a list of all of the additional personnel that we're adding on that, that was not in the budget at the beginning of this year. Because that's every time you add on to something that's going to go on, it's like eating into that growth factor. So we need to keep that list as well.
Mr. Deckard?
I appreciate the, the consistency. I guess my question is also for Ms. Rice. Do we, we got a motion on the floor? Do we need another motion to postpone this indefinitely pending WIS review?
That would be, that would be a good idea, yes.
Okay, Counsel, I make a motion to postpone this item pending WIS review and further classification.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
That is consistent to how, with how we handled the highway request as well.
Yes, it is.
Okay, any questions or comments? Is there any public comment on Mr. Deckard's motion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilor Iverson, sorry?
Yeah, yes.
Councilor Spinnmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll get that over to WIS and we'll be in touch soon, okay?
I, I just want to make a comment that I did have Penny update her questionnaire to ensure that, you know, the full-time backup and things are included, just like I did with Lisa at the last one regarding her position. So I've got all the paperwork and it can go forward, so.
All right, and speaking of Ms. Ridge, she'll be up next here.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request to amend the 2021 Salary Ordinance Fund 1176-0531 Motor Vehicle Highway Maintenance and Repair and add account line 15859 Highway Maintenance Laborer, 40 hours, minimum level, non-exempt, and also add Union Highway Zero Grid for this new position.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ridge, welcome.
Evening. I will be brief on this. So we did attend the PAC meeting and then we did go to the council meeting. It has been sent to WIS. WIS has recommended it to be an LTC II on their level. It will be a union position, non-exempt, and at the base rate is 1707 an hour. I would not be requesting an additional for this for the remainder of 2021 due to, we can do an in-house transfer. And I will be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, we'll check with counsel. Are any questions or comments on this request? We did hear this at PAC, as Ms. Ridge mentioned, and this is, this would be effective immediately, right?
August 29th, I believe, is what we had agreed on with Kim. It's a new payroll. It has to be, if it's approved this evening, it'll have to be posted within the union for the next seven days.
Okay. All right, any, any questions or comments, counsel? Any public comment? Okay.
I'm going to put my stuff late at night now.
Yeah. We've had plenty of, plenty of bites at the apple on this one, that's for sure. Okay, many, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Spinnmore?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval of the Parks Department request for a fund-to-fund cash transfer of $500,000 from either Fund 11000 General Fund or Fund 1186 Rainy Day to Fund 9107 Next Level Trails Grant. This is to assist the Parks Department fill the gap until the grant funding is released.
Second.
Okay, welcome back, Ms. Whitmer.
And I'm going to, I'm going to start off addressing this and I'm going to let Kelly jump in as needed. As the council probably knows, we have an informal group of department heads. Lisa Ridge is on there, Kelly's on there, council members join. Penny Giffens, I know, participates. We've got really nice group, working group of people that work on trail projects because trail projects don't, it, it takes more than one department. It takes, you know, a whole lot of us to get this done. Well, we've been working pretty hard on putting in a trail from Ellisville to connect to the Carstorm Greenway. And it's, we've had some obstacles. We are working with a railroad crossing and it's taken a bit longer than we had originally hoped. And the DNR has not released their grant funds. We got a $2.3 million grant from the DNR. The, the construction dollars have not yet been released because we're waiting on this railroad approval. We have been doing all kinds of things to get their railroad approval completed so that we can get our construction dollars released. Lisa Ridge went above and beyond to help us out. One of the things that the railroad said that they would like, and they sort of told us this at the last minute, is hey, we'd like some federal funds attached to this project. Can you by any chance get some NDOT dollars attached to the project? And again, Lisa was great about working her contacts and as you know, she's got a lot of respect at the state. And so that, she, she pulled some, some of her contacts and was able to get some Department of Transportation dollars. We thought that would sort of get the railroad approval for us and that we would then be able to get our construction dollars released. That didn't work. And so we are in this holding pattern where we have this trail project that we have artificially divided into two sections. And we've already bid out the first section and we've awarded the contract in B paving, but we haven't signed the contract because we need some cash. So we're, I'm here tonight to ask the council to give us $500,000 to help us with our cash flow problem. Now, the one thing I want to say, I want to go on the record as saying, I believe we're going to be able to pay you this back once we get our grant dollars approved. Because there are fact, are factors outside our control, that being the railroad, I don't want to absolutely guarantee tonight that we will be able to pay this back. I want to be very honest and very upfront that if something would completely go haywire and we wouldn't get the railroad approval done, and then, then this could be a game changer. I would of course come back to you and explain that to you if we think we're going to have that problem. I don't think it's going to be the case. And I know Lisa's here and she can speak to that, or maybe Kelly, if they want to speak to it, but I fully expect that the, this is just a cash flow problem. But I also don't want to, I don't, I don't want to not mention that, that if something happened, we could, we could perhaps not, not get the approval. Marty, you have a question?
Yes, I'm just thinking, if it's what you just said, and there is no guarantee that can be returned back to the fund, then it seems to me the safest thing to do is to take it out of rainy day because there's no obligation to return it to rainy day.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I just, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing. I, I've, I've always thought rainy day seems like the most, the most straightforward and yeah, we don't have to record it as a loan in, in any case. But, but yet it still gives the project the, the capability to, to pay us back once the state releases the funds.
And we fully expect to do that. You know, we'll, we'll see how things go. We do have, we are working hard to get this money spent because we need to get it all completed by next fall. So we do have a plan for it. We know when we're going to, when we're going to chop trees down after October, when we're going to bid out the next section. We've been in touch with ENB. They're ready to go just as soon as we get, I told them last week when I talked to ENB paving that we, we would be talking to you tonight, going to the council commissioners tomorrow to ask for approval of that contract. If we get this done, that we will then give them a notice to proceed. They did say that they think they can get this project done in a really pretty short period of time. This first leg of the trail is pretty easy. It's the next leg that has the railroad crossing that might take a little bit longer. But once, I'm telling you what, once this gets done, those people are going to be so excited to be able to go from the town of Ellisville to our Carstorm Greenway. Questions? Kelly, got anything that I forgot?
No, it was excellent. Thank you.
Peter, did you have a question?
I was going to ask a question, but Margie actually explained it in her answer, so great minds.
Do we, do we have any, anybody opposed to the rainy day plan? Okay, do we need to perhaps modify the motion?
Counsel, I move to amend the motion on the floor to make the $500,000, $500,000 transfer out of rainy day and not the general fund.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on Mr. McKim's amendment? Seeing none from counsel, is there any public comment? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hawke, did you have a-
Just wanted to remind us, it takes more than a simple majority, so it takes more votes.
Yep.
This is, this is just, this is just a motion to amend the motion on the floor. So actually, this motion-
Not the under, yeah.
Right, then the next one.
Understand that, that right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote on the amendment.
All right, Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Spinnmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we'll consider the underlying motion for the rainy day fund for the fund-to-fund cash transfer, $500,000. Do we have any questions or comments on that? Yes, Mr. McKim?
Yeah, I, so I am part of the, the trails group that Margie mentioned. We've been spending a long time working on this, this project and I've got to say, we have benefited incredibly from Kelly's leadership and effective relationships with the state and then with Lisa, as, as Margie already mentioned, with Lisa's effective relationship with, with NDOTs and the state and working with the railroad. And, I mean, we could not have a better team in place to actually make this come about. And I, you know, we've been talking about this strategy of doing this transfer for a, for a while. I had hoped we wouldn't have to just be, because I hoped that the state would release the money, but I, but I understand that they're not going to do that until we get the engineering done. And, you know, I have full confidence in our team and the ability to execute. And I, I really would appreciate everyone's support for this because I think the residents of Ellisville have been, you know, looking forward to having this trail finished sooner rather than later. And, you know, that's, it's, it's a great investment that the state has made in Monroe County, $2.3 million. It was, I think, what either the biggest or one of the biggest of the first round of next level trails in the state. So I think, let's move ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKim. Any other questions?
Can I also thank Kim Show? Because as we, as we went back and forth about how to do this, she was just super helpful too. So again, this is a real team effort, so.
And then thank you, Margie also. I mean, Margie, Margie might be, was too modest to say it herself, but she's also been a, a critical piece in making this work.
Thank you.
Thanks all around.
Been a long time coming. Ellis has been waiting a long time.
And I have to say for the, just to give a lot of credit to the people that we've talked with out in Ellisville, it could not have been nicer as we're, as we're going around, talking to property owners nearby. They've been extremely kind and I'll tell you, as I work on trail projects in Monroe County, I don't always get that, that treatment. Sometimes I, I get some people that are not very happy at all to see me. So I have to give credit to the good people in the town of Ellisville because they've been extremely kind to us as we, as we've been out there.
I just would like to say, to start out that way, there were a lot of property owners along the way many years ago, when this first was discussed, they were not in favor of having this trail coming through. And it's just amazing how over time, the, the changing in how people perceive the trails and the value it will make to their property and their use of their property. So time sometimes changes things.
Okay, anything further?
To ask a question?
Yes.
Just because we have Megan here and, and any public that might be listening, I know that with rainy day, you have to have more than the majority.
Five votes.
Yeah. I guess what is that number so that we know moving forward? Because I don't think I've ever-
Hold your hand up, Jeff.
Five, five votes.
That's what I was thinking, but I wanted to make sure, so.
All right, so as long as we got five, it'll happen.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councilor Spinnmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, now we'll move to item B.
Okay, Counsel, I move to approve the Parks Department request for a category transfer in Fund 9107-000- Okay, council, I move to approve the Parks Department request for a category transfer in Fund 9107-0000. Next level trails in the amount of $2,323,710 in the capital category to the services category.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any additional information for us on this one?
Kim, do you want to speak or do you want me to speak?
I, I can do it if you'd like for me to, I don't, I don't mind. So, uh, just reviewing the grant and going through that information, um, and getting information from Kelly. Um, everything that she's doing with regards to this trails is considered services. So, um, when the grant was established, it was all put into capital, which was infrastructure. And which is not the correct category. So this just corrects that so that when she moves forward paying services for her contractors and that kind of thing is coming out like it should.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this item? Do we have any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very good. Moving on to item 10 now.
All right, council, I move to approve the youth services, services bureau's request for midpoint higher. The clinical coordinator position in Fund 1114-0166. Lit special purpose YSB and to simultaneously amend the 2021 salary ordinance. Account line 11140, clinical coordinator, 40 hours, pat five exempt to a midpoint higher status.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Welcome, Mr. Malone. Hope you've had a chance to eat dinner. I don't think any of us have yet.
It was the, the conversation was too riveting. I haven't been able to pull myself away. Um, I promise I'll be brief. Um, so Ethan Smith is our clinical coordinator. He has done a great job, but his dream has always been to hang up his shingle and go into private practice. So he has started that process. He's leaving us September the 10th. We have brought in his replacement. Her name is Monica Fleetwood Black. She will be beginning on August 30th. Um, and we, because she is an LCSW, she will be able to supervise something that we've been having to pay others to do for us. Some of our MSW, uh, our LSW candidates who want to get their LCSW. So coming in, she will be providing a savings to us, um, actually for another. And we, um, and she has over years of experience. I know you have this in front of you, these papers were sent to you, um, and working in the field and with the courts. And so we are seeking midpoint higher status for her at this time. Um, I'm open to any questions that you might have about anything.
Yes, let's, uh, let's see if there's any questions or, uh, comments here on their requests. Everyone's had a opportunity to review all of this. Anybody have any questions? All right. We'll see if there's any public comment. Doesn't seem like there's any public comment, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Could I mention one thing? Vicky will be upset if I did not mention that there, we are not seeking an additional appropriation.
Right, yeah.
All right, Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spooner?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and good evening. And the next up is our council office update from Council Administrator Kim Shell.
Good evening, council. Um, so, um, what I wanted to do is I forwarded to you guys the council budget. And, um, with my recommendations and just wanted some feedback on any questions or concerns that you might have with regards to that. Do we need to play it? Do you?
Can you display it?
Just a second.
This is longer than budget hearings.
T S D, where do I go to, to share?
Uh, normally at the bottom, there's a, um, where you have the commands.
Okay.
There's a shared screen.
Yep, I found it.
So it was basically a flat budget, right?
Yes, um, the only thing, let's see, I'm sorry, it's so small.
Um, I can't read it.
No, sorry. Um, the only thing that, um, I decreased the contractual, which is, because currently we, uh, we had 100,000. And so I decreased that to 30. Um, and that's just a guess with what we might use for, um, with moving forward. And I did increase, um, the Sophia Travis per the, uh, growth quotient, so amount. But everything else, um, stayed the same. I, I did increase the paper, um, a little bit right here, uh, by a hundred dollars. And that's because paper prices are going up, but other than that, it's all flat.
Great. Well, and that, uh, was according to, uh, to the instructions, I think, that, uh, were, were sent out by the council earlier. So thank you for preparing this. Do we have any questions or, uh, comments on the proposed council budget that we'll be considering here in a couple of weeks? Pretty, uh, pretty unremarkable, which is a good thing. This is good. But all, all, all very familiar stuff to us. There's no surprises in here, so that's good. All right, well, if there's no, uh, yeah, Ms. Munson?
Yes, uh, you hear this from me every year. And I would urge, uh, my fellow counselors to consider, um, a slight increase at least in the community services grants fund. Because, um, the, the growth quotient is, is a very small amount. I think you know from, from hearing, uh, the Sophia Travis grant presentations, that we always, um, have, uh, much greater requests for funding, uh, than we, uh, can award. And what our fund is, um, is very small. It's about, uh, it's about one-fifth of what the, the city's fund is. So I know theirs is over, um, over, uh, 550,000. So if you would consider a slight increase, um, I think that would be good. I would say, uh, I would recommend an amount of, of $10,000 to increase it from last year.
Okay. And I, just to be clear, I don't, this, I, I think this is more of a discussion or, but, but we're not making decisions on, uh, the actual, but we'll be doing that, having more of those types of discussions in the, uh, the actual workshops. But, uh, I think it's good to get these suggestions out there so that we can be thinking about it. And, uh, incorporate those, uh, into the, uh, into the budget during the workshops. Mr. McKim, did you have a question?
I, I was gonna say what, exactly what you just said. I didn't want to be taking a vote on this because I think we.
We're not.
Yeah.
And I think would be along the lines of, um, we'd, we'd want to add this to our kind of ongoing list of additional items that, you know, are, are being submitted outside of the, um, uh, flat budgets, basically, that we requested. Uh, and then we'll, uh, consider each of those kind of individually. Kate, did you have a question?
It probably goes on that list. I don't know. Um, and I, I can't read this, but my recollection is that, um, at some point we had talked, somebody had talked about, um, the being a chamber membership of some, I mean, is that something that has been brought up? I, I know that, because BEDC being on there reminded me. Um, and I don't remember, and I can't see if, if anything else is on there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good point.
That is a good point.
I, I believe the, if I recall, I think the commissioners may have a membership with the chamber, but I, I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, then we should certainly discuss and get, getting that. Now also, I don't know if Ellisville has a, um, if their chamber has a, uh, an opportunity for membership there as well too. But I think that would certainly be appropriate as well. Um, so yeah, let's, let's add that. I think that's a great suggestion. Okay, let's add that along with Ms. Munson's suggestion. We can add, uh, those onto our supplemental list.
So.
If, if, uh, council staff could do a little research, maybe contact the, the Bloomington, Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. See what those, uh, costs would be for membership as well as the Ellisville Chamber. Uh, we could get that incorporated. Great idea. Any other comments or suggestions or questions?
So I just want to clarify, uh, with, uh, Counselor Munson. So your request would be to up the Sophia Travis amount to 145,400 dollars total. Or an additional 10,000 onto what I've already done.
I think, I think that's, uh, the actual amount is, is, uh, to be discussed. I just think that, um, the small percentage increase is not, is not what we really need for this program. So.
I, I know, but I, but I always go ahead and input that request so that we have that in, uh, when we do our advertising.
Oh, yes, okay. So, so please, I would recommend, uh, that it be $10,000 additional.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, anything further? All right, well, I think we've got a good, uh, got a good plan here for the council budget. And we'll, uh, get some additional information, uh, based on, uh, Michelle's research. And, uh, we'll move forward accordingly.
I, um, I have one other thing, or a couple of other things, if that's okay. Um, so I have prepared budget session schedules. And based on, um, the salaries being flat. So, um, are you? So I guess my, my question is, do we want to have a special session where we talk about, um, any type of a raise? Uh, COLA, wh-what do you, you know, want to think about if anything? Cause I know you do have this WIS study that you need to think about how, how to move forward. And I just need to know how to proceed with the budgets moving forward with that as well as, um, well, we'll just, we'll just go there.
Cheryl, it looks like you're first in line. Did you, did you want to respond to that first or?
You're muted.
That's a leftover hand.
Okay, got it. Jeff?
I know, we always struggle with this because, you know, I, because of the processes. We're, we're always asked to do the budget before we do the budget and we just, we just can't. And, and, and especially that, you know, this year when we're talking about implementing some or all of this WIS plan. Uh, you know, I really think the, the COLA needs to be a pretty minor part of the, the overall discussion of compensation. If we do one at all, I'd be more inclined to want to do a bigger percentage of the, the WIS, you know, moving to the, the WIS plan overall during this year. Rather than also, you know, dealing with a, dealing with a COLA. So to, yeah, I wouldn't mind a special session to do, because I mean, we are, we're gonna have to spend a fair amount of time just talking about these salary issues independent of any department's individual budget. So, and I, I understand that, that Kim needs that information sooner rather than later. So I'm, I'd be all in favor of a special session on that, but I really think we ought to focus on what we can do for the WIS plan.
Yeah, and, and that was my, I, you know, it's, it's not that, I just need to know how to move forward with.
Advertising.
With advertising, yeah. We get to that point, so, yeah.
Uh, Counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes, uh, maybe if we just got a, a basic, here's our new revenue. Remember we lost, we're projecting a loss of revenue in that income tax of over a million dollars. Forget exactly what that amount was. But anyway, what the new revenue is going to be. And, uh, then also, uh, steps of, uh, trying to get each of the categories, classification categories, uh, brought up to the minimum level. That's how we did it before when we tried to adjust it. We just said, you know, if there's X number that's below that bottom line, bring them up to the line for each of those classifications. That might be all we can do, or at least let's have a plan.
Well, will we be able to make any, um, definitive kind of decisions without the information from the FSG, uh, revenue analysis? I think we probably need to have that first, right?
Right, when do we get that?
Yeah, I, I don't recall. I forget. We'd have to ask the auditor's office.
On the lost revenue, by the way, I, I do, I have actually just a little bit of information on that.
Yeah.
Which I can present whenever anybody wants.
Yeah, please do.
Oh, right now? Okay.
That's fine.
Just, sorry, I just put together three slides just literally as the meeting was beginning, so they're not very polished. Can somebody, uh, yeah, thank you, okay. Um, okay. All right, so everybody see this? All right, so this is, this is, uh, the first slide is the, uh, local income tax based on what we've received from the state so far. And this is actually all the taxing units along with the changes in local income tax from the, uh, both certified shares and public safety. As you can see, the, oh, if you look at the number in the lower right-hand corner, minus four, 4.6, that's really overall where, uh, you know, how much the, the county as a whole went down. So that's our actual reduction in net, um, local income tax for the, um, for the entire county. And that's obviously, um, I mean, that, that's, obviously the pandemic effect. It's in addition, because, because the, uh, Fire Protection District increased its levy so much, a lot of the other units. a lot of the other units went down even more than that 4.6% because of the shift from other units to the to the fire district. So as you can see, we actually are going to see about 1.3 million dollar reduction in local income tax, which is about a 7.3% change reduction in and local income tax from certified shares to public safety. So that's that's on the negative side. Then just to, you know, just just so everybody kind of understands where that local income tax money comes from. The money that we'll receive in 2022 for local income tax is actually based on the tax returns that are filed from September 1st of 2020 to June 30th of 2021. That's two year or two months less of filing time, filing months because of the the shifts made in the pandemic than is usual. And conversely, last year, so the lit that we're receiving right now, in which we saw a generous increase, actually consisted of 14 months worth of tax returns. So in some way, you know, we we've received a little bit of an advance this year on what what could have been filed next year. Now, by and large, most of the money was still earned from January 1st through December 31st, 2020. So we really are talking the pandemic economy. And I gotta say, you know, just my my gloss on it is seeing 4.6% loss in income tax in in a year in which businesses were shut down almost entirely for for several weeks. And I think that's actually pretty good. You know, I think that just shows how strong the local economy really is. I honestly would have expected a much bigger loss. Then just to throw in where the property tax comes from, if we, you remember that we still actually, we get a one, 4.3% maximum levy growth quotient this year, which is quite high because several, a low number dropped off and the new low number for the incoming in 2020 hasn't yet factored into the levy growth calculation. So that 4.3% is is quite high, but it doesn't take into account the pandemic economy at all. So that next year will be the first year that that levy growth will actually reflect the the bad year of income of 2020. But ultimately, when you get down to it, we've lost about 1.3 million dollars in in lit. And then in the general fund, we'll get an increase of about a million, almost exactly a million dollars in property tax. So we're really between property tax and and income tax, we're really talking actually about a true net loss of about $300,000. So, you know, when Counselor Hawke mentions increases eating into the growth, the growth factor, well, you know, we actually don't really have a growth factor this year. We have negative growth because the income tax, the loss in income tax, both from the shift from the fire district and the net loss in incomes, that actually created a net negative number. Now, of course, you know, this, this is what, you know, where the FSG report comes in. We certainly, we don't know yet how this 3 million or $300,000 loss will figure into the overall, and this year's revenues will figure into overall loss and revenue. So we might be able to make up some or all of it, all of that loss with ARPA money. But then, of course, that just leaves less ARPA money. I mean, it's a fixed bucket. So that just leaves less ARPA money for us to do for some of the priorities we wanted to do. So just kind of wanted to show everybody that we are, you know, what what we're seeing so far in in net revenue for next year. So if anybody has any questions about any of those numbers.
Yeah, I saw Ms. Hawke's hand first and then Ms. Munson.
Oh, oh, I just, I just had my hand up here. But I just want to say thank you so much. That's Beverly McKim, you're always on top of it. But I also think that one of the reasons why the revenue looked to be, oh, am I muted?
No, we hear you.
Remember, that was including the the money that people received, the estimated money that people were receiving from the federal government. And so that was added on there, whether I'm, it didn't mean they were actually, it was earned income at at jobs. So it seems to me we have to take that in consideration. And also, you wonder how many of those folks really will be able to pay that income tax on it. I I don't know how all that work. It's too late for me to figure all that out tonight, but I think we have to keep that. We're working and looking at a wild unknown because we have to start planning for that annexation loss. We see what the loss is there, having to do with how much money went to the fire district. So if we think that hit us, wait till the annexation hits us.
Oh, and Bree did, Bree Gregory did just say in the chat that we should receive the revenue loss report by Monday. So.
That's.
Great. Well, that fits our timeline just fine. Ms. Munson?
So that that exactly was my question. When do we expect the miscellaneous income that we need to report on that to to have a fuller picture? And so it looks like Monday.
And I know that I think I believe Bree and Kim had already said that they're working, I think, this Thursday on pulling together the 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 numbers. And so we'll start being able to plug in these numbers into the draft 4B very soon, it sounds like.
Yes, that is correct. So and that, and which leads me to the next question. What day, and I would prefer next week, could we schedule a special session to go over the preliminary budgets? Just keep in mind that we have our first budget session is scheduled for September 8.
What about, I mean, what about Tuesday?
Tuesday would work.
Tuesday would work. That's good with me.
I mean, normally we have plan commission, but this is the fifth Tuesday of the month. So there's no, no council or plan commission.
Could we do 5:30 again or 5 o'clock?
5:30.
Okay. Any any objections 5:30 on Tuesday next week? All right, Michelle, there you go. You got your marching orders.
And do you have a problem with me distributing draft budget session agendas? Yes.
No.
No.
I've spread things out over the five days a little bit better. Things should not last near as long as like they did the last year. So.
Yes, Ms. Hawke?
Yes, just get us the information as you are receiving it on what we plan to be discussing at the special session that we're having on Tuesday. Don't wait until Tuesday to give it to us.
No, I've no, I've got, and that was the other thing. I've got everybody's budgets in received. We've input everything into the the budget worksheet and I'm going to be working with the internal auditor with regards to making sure that our formulas are correct. So that way, moving forward, you'll have some good numbers. I've only had three departments, no, two departments with unique or one time requests. So I have that information. And pardon?
I suggested that the treasurer bring that forward with a an additional appropriation so that she could start moving on what she wanted.
Oh, okay. But that, yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything from her. So.
Well, she was going on conference. So.
Okay. Um. I think that's, that's all I have. So I mean, I I think we'll have some good, good numbers to give you. And then we can talk about how to move forward with whis or, you know, whatever you need to do. But I I do believe we've got some good numbers for you.
Excellent. So we'll plan to do 5:30 on Tuesday. And you feel that you're confident that'll give you enough time to get everything? Okay, good deal. So we'll plan on that. Are there any other questions or comments here before we conclude this? Yes, Ms. Munson?
Yes, always. Health insurance is a last minute consideration. Are we firm on that right now?
I checked with Angie a couple of times and she is good to go with what we're suggesting, which is 11,000 per position. So I'll double check again with her tomorrow on that. But as of, I think, maybe a week ago, that's what they were, and it may even, you know, because I know that they were working on trying to change over some stuff to self insured, another program of some sort with regards to workers comp or something like that. I can't remember which would help help the bottom line. So.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Michelle. We'll look forward to more budget conversations on Tuesday.
My plan is to get you at least a copy of everything before that, before Tuesday, so you can ask any questions if you need me to get things together before that. So.
Okay. Great. All right. So we'll conclude item 11 and up next is approval of minutes as presented. And we're gonna take a, based on Mr. McKim's suggestion, at last meeting, we're gonna take a new approach to this. So the minutes have been distributed and hopefully read. Are there any changes to the minutes as presented? If so, speak now. Is that your hand up, Ms. Munson? Okay. All right. So seeing no changes to the minutes for July 27, 2021 work session, they are approved. Item 13 is boards and commissions, a reminder that we've got a couple of openings on the women's commission. And.
We gotta find somebody.
Yeah, I know. We, I'm really hopeful we can do that soon. So if anybody's interested, please let us know or contact the women's commission. They'd love to talk to you. We've got applications that are easily accessible on the Monroe County Government website. Feel free to submit one if you're interested in those roles. Okay, item 14, we're now at our council comments period. Does anybody have comments this evening or speeches they'd like to make before we adjourn tonight? Lengthy, anything? Okay. None? It doesn't appear so. I'm just, I'm very hungry. I have been smelling food coming from my kitchen all night and I haven't been able to partake in any of that, but I will soon. And I just want to thank you all for getting through this very lengthy meeting tonight. But I, we had some really good discussion and we made some good headway on very important matters. So everyone go eat now and we'll, we'll see you next time. We are adjourned.